Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. The meeting is now open. I'm gonna start with a budget update from Mr. Brian Polito, our Chief Financial.
I just want to point out that the preliminary budget is on the agenda for next week. There has been no changes to the bottom line. We did have some minor reclassifications of revenues and expenses, but by and large, we're the same as last month and we're looking at a $9.5 million deficit. The budget that we're asking you to adopt next week is an unbalanced budget, but it is a preliminary budget. We did not include the savings from the consolidation and reconfiguration because that vote is not taking place until June 22nd. But I did want to take a couple of minutes and kind of walk through what the budget will look like once the consolidation takes effect. And I have up here the updated projections from PFM. These are the ones that they completed a couple of months back and are adjusted for our '15, '16 actual results, '16, '17 projection, and '17, '18 budget. We did have a two-hour call with PFM today. They're working on updated projections for '18, '19 through 2021, '22, and we're hoping to have those done in the next week or so. But if you see here for '17, '18, we have down here the $9.5 million deficit for that upcoming year. Again, absent any changes, if we were to run with that deficit for next year, we would end '17, '18 with a $13.5 million deficit. So I have in here the consolidation savings. And once you put those in there, you can see that it reduces our overall deficit to $5.2 million in '17, '18, which is not ideal, but if we are unable to get any additional assistance from the state and we don't want to make any more cuts, which the administration will more than likely be recommending that because we have made all the cuts we need to, we could run that budget with a $5.2 million deficit and get through one more year before we were in jeopardy of missing a payroll. So you can see how that plays out. By 2021, with the consolidation savings only, it would reduce our deficit from $19 million to $12.6. There were some questions about how the debt service would work, and it would increase our expenditures by $3 million a year. So again, last month, we talked about that's coming online in '18, '19. Again, all contingent upon getting some additional funding from the state, but with that, if you add $3 million in, again, by 2021, '22, we're only out by $15 million. So again, the whole idea that $10 to $15 million of recurring revenue from the state would allow us to make all of this happen.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
I think I know the answer, but do we have any news, official or unofficial, from Harrisburg about our status and where we are? What we can expect?
Nothing official or unofficial at this point. We do have the Senate Education Committee coming up. I think we notified you that next week. That's a very good sign that that committee is coming here to talk to us and coming to talk specifically about our issues. Again, we feel that's a very good sign. So next week, we're planning to have this, the budget with the $9.5 million deficit on for approval. I just wanted to ask if there's anything, we've had a little time to go through the budget details, if there's anything that you have any questions on or anything that you might want us to go over in more detail next week?
Mr. President? Go ahead. The projected $4.3 million in savings through the consolidation effort. I'd like to see more detail on how that's playing out, how that's going to play out, including the 60-sub-million in the addition and renovation to Central. Specifically, you know, we're anticipating a $3 million debt service on that. My concern about that is that if we get $3 million, which I have not seen since I've been around here, an increase in basic education funding, how are we going to fund that $3 million? Let's assume the worst case, the probability, and then the best-case scenario, and see how it is. I mean, I'd hate for us to get $6 million increase in basic education, of which half of it is buried in debt service. So it's only going to give us $3 million to run operation, including all the schools that need renovation work and all that.
So I do have in here a little trigger to turn on a $15 million permanent increase in our basic debt subsidy. And once you trigger that, you can see here that actually if we were to receive that for next year, we would run a surplus for the next several years.
Right.
And by the end, even with this $3 million debt service, we would have a fund balance in the $10 million range, which we should have by '18, so that's still not ideal, but it is still workable. Again, we are working with PFM. We have a few ideas that we've generated eternally to help save some money and some additional money in these outlying years. PFM has given us a couple of ideas in PDE, so we're hopeful as we work through this new recovery submission that we'll be able to take that $19 million and reduce it down a little more. And again, that's why when we say between $10 to $15 million, that's how this would work. If we get something less than that, and we'll know that we have before we have to make a decision on any renovation projects because that decision will come later this summer, we'll know what we have to work with by that point. So we, again, that will-
You mean, you have allocation from the state?
Yes.
Well, that's assuming you have a budget passed by your attorney, too.
Assuming they have a budget passed, yeah.
I haven't seen that lately either.
But at least that will give us some clarity around what we can or can't do. And if we get $6 million, then the chances of us being able to move ahead with a renovation project at Central are unlikely. So we can, and you kind of led into my next topic here with the debt service. We will provide you, next week, we can go over in more detail the consolidation savings on Option A. But one thing that we've been working with PDE, or I'm sorry, there's too many P acronyms right now. PNC has given us a verbal kind of analysis of what our debt service is, and talked about the $3 million and how that could wrap around and generate $67 million in funding. In order for them to do some more detailed analysis for us and provide us some things in writing, we need to appoint them as our underwriter for those bonds. So on the agenda for next week, we have a recommendation to appoint them. Now, this is not a binding appointment. It's preliminary and non-binding, so this just allows them to begin the work, to start providing that type of analysis so that we can look at it in more detail. And if, at some point down the road, we decide not to do a project up at Central, or we decide to use another underwriter, we can always void that agreement and select somebody else.
Are we liable for expenses that they were incurred in this process?
So would we intend eventually to shop around for rates and find other underwriters? Or as we're doing legwork, are we going to build into that?
I think that's a discussion we're going to have to have at some point. PNC is, right now, has all of our swap agreements, and really has helped us through all that and been very flexible. So it's something I think we're going to have to take into consideration because if we do decide to shop and go somewhere else, the next time we have to renew one of those agreements, they may not be as flexible. So that's something I think we'll have to take into consideration if we have underwriters.
Okay. Any questions on the debt services? Okay, on the reconfiguration, consolidating, Mr. Polito or Ms. Kowalski?
Ms. Kowalski's gonna go through a PowerPoint presentation on the reconfiguration.
Really?
your last meeting regarding Option A. And so the first thing we wanted to put on was the boundaries that we have for our elementary schools, which are the 10 schools that would be pre-K to five, as well as our middle schools, which would be the three schools that we would be changing and adding that East Middle School. So we wanted to, again, tell you some of the things that we've been doing. So we have six subcommittees at this time, and those subcommittees are working together. We meet on Tuesdays, and we just started this Tuesday to really share out on all of the things that we're doing in each of those subcommittees. And then our hope is that we can make that public to all of you, as well, originally sent to you, all of the notes that we have compiled, as well as make it public and put it on the district website. And then we also have a master timeline that we all have been working on, and we've been keeping to our timelines to make sure that we're reaching our deadlines that we have. So our timeline that we have been working on since you've last met was, the boundaries that I just showed you is actually on the website, so it is live. And we currently are doing pre-K and kindergarten registration up on the fourth floor, and it's going very well. Many of the families are, at that time, learning where their boundary will be. We also, today, I've asked all of our executive leadership team to present what their committees have been working on, so you have an idea of each of the committees and what they've been doing individually. And then they, again, bring it to the table on Tuesday, where we're all meeting together to make sure that we're on track and making sure that we're not having any gaps. So this is basically the timeline that we've kept at this point. I am going to ask some of my colleagues to come up. We're gonna start with the logistics. This is the committee that works on the immediate priorities of packing, moving, and distributing over the summer. That group is meeting weekly. There are some lesser priorities when we've talked about inventorying everything, working with the service center. This group meets on Thursday mornings at 8:00, and those are some of the items. Nora, do you want to speak to that committee?
Sure. Eric Seibert and I are heading this group. Our first meeting, as you can see, was on, was last Thursday. This work really needed to be informed by the board recommendation so that we understood what it is we were packing, moving, and distributing, and how that was playing out. So now we begin work in earnest, and we did start with an exhaustive agenda, which we had to narrow down. You know, we can't take care of everything at once, so let's take care of our teachers and our students and our buildings, and then our lesser priorities emerged. And on the next slide is the timeline that has come out of that. So as soon as possible, we asked for any summer activities for the buildings because there's going to be a lot of activity going on in the buildings, and we need to make sure that we are streamlining summer activities as much as we can and that everybody's aware of them. The next, May 12th, the pre-printed labels and boxes and tape will be out to buildings because on May 16th, that's an act 80 day where teachers will be packing anything that they need to move that are, you know, those are district materials, they're personal materials, they're encouraged to pack at any time. Because people right now are saying, "What can I do? What can I do to help with anything?" Pack your personal things. You know, you can take your personal things home as soon as you don't need them. So that's an immediate step that people can take. And then the timeline goes through. It's been updated as I've received new information. Libraries closing, science materials. There are some buildings who are taking advantage of June 15th as an additional day that we can be without students because there are enough hours to count for the year so that they have, those teachers have more time to take care of their belongings. And another, I think Harding chose an early dismissal day because they didn't have enough hours left to get the full day. So any questions about the logistics timeline?
One of the things that I have to say is that in the past, when we closed our three schools of Irving, Burton, and Glenwood, this was the exact same procedure we used when we did the closing and the consolidations of the other schools. So we took what we did in the past and we looked at it, and actually, we are even ahead of schedule of what we had done when it was the closings of the past.
Right, this timeline was modeled after 2012.
How long did it really take? And do you think there was an adequate amount of time to close and move last time?
It worked. We had some glitches here and there, and we anticipate that there may be some glitches here and there, but we do feel that with having it done before, our teachers have done it. There are many teachers that have done it, some have not, but the union has been working hand-in-hand with us in making it a doable piece.
As far as the physical move, Servieri has agreed to step up and take the lead on helping us provide the labor for the actual moves this summer, which is going to be huge for us. Last time, we had to hire some movers. This time, we think with all that help, that we'll be able to just hire the trucks and have those individuals help us move the actual boxes from one building to another. And right now, I think we're slated to start up in July. Is that correct, my question?
And will some of the teachers, maybe this is more for Doug, will some of the teachers that aren't affected, are they lending a hand to help their fellow union members?
Assume. If I were in a building that we moved, I'd be wanting to help.
This is another piece that was informed from our move in 2012. Teachers come with a lot of boxes, so the more specific we were able to be in labeling boxes, the better our chances were of getting them to their end destination. So there is a different label for each grade depending, you know, because that informs the content areas. And then sixth through eighth is lumped together and nine through 12. But those are being printed and sent to the buildings so that people can do this as efficiently as possible.
So the goal for this to be, begin the work, is May 16th, where they'll be doing that in the buildings.
Sorry, President? Thank you. I get the transfer. I understand. The question that I have is, do we have a plan in place on where they're going to specifically be moved to? In other words, are we going to have a warehouse full of boxes that are going to be redistributed to the schools where they're ultimately going to be placed? And secondly, if we're going to the 9-12 consolidation, if we're going to be doing the same thing for them, how will they know what school they're going to be placed at?
So to address the first part of your question, in 2012, we utilized Irving as a staging area, sort of. You know, all materials went there and then were sent as we learned that classrooms were needed. We're trying to avoid that this year, and so it's going to be the principal's responsibility as soon as, you know, rosters are verified and they have the correct information to put, to mark boxes where teachers are going. So as soon as they have that information, it can be marked on the box, and the teacher's materials can be sent to a large common area. We said cafeterias, gymnasiums, where they can be placed. And so the organization of that is still being worked out, but we're trying to avoid that middle ground staging area because it kind of made Irving what it is today.
So we're looking to stage everything in the gym, hopefully by the end of the school year or shortly thereafter. And then June 30th, I think, Teresa, is when we will have all the posting process done, and at that point, we will know exactly where the teachers are going, and the principal and the custodial and engineering staff in each of those buildings can then take those boxes and put them in sections so these boxes are going to Central, these boxes are going to Strong Ginsop, these boxes are going to East. And then that's when Servieri will come in and help us make those moves.
I think that addressed the second part of your question, too. On June 30th, we will know where all these teachers are being moved to, so we can take the step of getting their belongings with them.
I guess some of the confusion that I would have is, in our consolidation effort in the elementary portion, how do we know what the enrollment's going to be at Joanna Carlisle and these other places to be able to accommodate that?
Child Accounting is working on that right now, and by the middle of this month, we're gonna get letters out to all families, letting them know where they'll be and requesting any updated addresses so that we can really have a lock on that by the end of this month.
We have preliminary estimates based on our new boundaries and where those students would be going if those boundaries were in place right now. So we have a solid estimate on the number of students that are going to be in each building at this point.
And yet, we're still going to keep the classroom size to 25 max as we're headed? Okay. Thank you.
So Neil Brockman is heading our safety committee. Neil?
Yep. So much like we've seen before, these were all of the questions that came up during the listening tour around safety. And so the safety committee met this morning, actually, and we're meeting in two weeks, moving ahead with what we think that we can do as far as making sure that the buildings are as safe as possible for everybody. So the first major area that at least they recognize is infrastructure needs. What does Central Tech, or whatever it's going to be called, actually need in order to make it a safe and secure school? So we have a rough estimate as to how much it would cost to completely overhaul, all the way down to just replace and add new cameras. So we've got a rough ballpark figure as to how much that will cost us to do. Part of that leads into the next one, where I had a phone call actually this afternoon with the Director of Erie County Department of Public Safety, and he said that he is more than willing to partner with us as far as moving ahead under this idea that our camera system and the county would be able to access it at certain times. Obviously, there would have to be very tight agreements as to when it could be accessed and everything else, but if there happens to be an emergency, they could tie into it. And so that conversation has started and will continue. The new administration, now that they know that they're going to be there, had a couple of additional requests, and so those are certain things that they wanted. Radios, just for example. Intercom system, they stated. A couple of things that are just very simple and easy fixes, railings on the stairs, stuff along those lines. And we've already sent one list, the Servieri, of areas that the building needs to be improved or areas for the building to be improved. Fire alarms, obviously, master locks and utility closets, kind of simple, very easy things to fix. Thank you. So that's kind of the building itself, as in the physical structure of the building. And we all know that's not where it ends, and so on top of that, there are certain decisions that the administrative team has to make in order to make sure that everybody is safe. And so these are some of the things that they are working on right now, where the students are actually going to be located in the building. Where they're going to place the support staff and the police officers and the probation officers and all of those things. How those administrative teams are going to work together in collaboration to make sure that everybody is supported. The creation of a crisis team to make sure that we've got everything in place. Now, I know that we have an emergency management plan, but having a, because the building is going to be so large, it would make sense to make sure that we have a crisis team in place just in case something bad, unfortunately, would happen. The administration is looking at revisions to the student handbook, and then I know that Chief Fohn would say that we definitely want to make sure that we enhance the relationship between our existing place force and APD. And the last thing is just making sure that we can really build that school culture. I think that we've kind of started that with our student summit, where we've got representatives from all of the high schools, all the grade bands that are going to be affected next year. And Daria can talk more to the work that they've already been doing. But some of the things that we could just do to make sure that they, number one, feel pride in their school. Number two, certain things, school-wide positive behavior support plan, so let's recognize the good. I think a lot of the times, that's one of the things that we miss, and so those are the things that we really want to make sure that we're doing. The Department of Homeland Security created a school safety checklist in 2013. It's free, it's online, so we're going to make sure that we do a walkthrough of the building with the checklist to make sure that, according to the Department of Homeland Security, if we pass that test, then we should feel pretty comfortable in the school being safe. And then lastly, we're just going to ask the kids, "What concerns do you guys have?" So that we can make sure that we address them before the school year comes up.
ADA, does it comply?
Those are items that are on the list. There's a couple of areas essential that, there's just stairs, the wheelchair ramps, and so those will have to be addressed as well.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I have a question for Mr. Brockman. At some point in time, are we going to consider bringing our alternative ed kids into these buildings?
Probably not, at least the way that I see it going into the future. I mean, right now, we are renting space at the Bayfront Maritime Center.
And I have a great deal of respect for Dennis, but I also feel very strongly that they need to be in our schools with us.
Yes. I agree. And because I work with them on a day-to-day basis, my whole, my position is that they were, for some reason, unsuccessful in traditional high school, for some reason or another. So number one, we have to get them to the point where they are ready to return. Number two, at their current location, the fact that they have access to a boat shop and the wood shop, which is top of the line, and for some of those kids, that's the most fun they've had in school ever. And so to pull that away from them without having a suitable replacement, I feel would just be unfair to that population of kids.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
So Daria Devlin will speak to the communication and the PR side.
And I wanted to just follow up on something you also said, Mr. Casillo, to your question about ADA. We met with the Servieri team with Mr. Seibert yesterday, and ramps were one of the top things that they were going to be able to do for us. They already had some plans for that, so we're addressing that. And I also wanted to say, before I started, Mr. Harkins, we are recording today, wanted to point that out per your request, so all of this information will be able to go up on YouTube and on our channel, too, as well. So I'm speaking today about communications and public relations. Again, these were some of the questions we started with from our listening tour that had to do with PR and communication, so this is guiding some of our work. If you can go to the next slide, please. So one of the first things that I've done is assembled what I'm calling a student summit group, for lack of a better term. That's two students from each grade level in grades nine to 11. We're not including the seniors because they're graduating, from each high school, so that's 24 students. We initially, we asked the principals to choose these students, and I was very specific. They should not be the best students, the student council students, they should be the leaders. They should be the ones who can speak to what's going on and the ones who can go back and talk to their peers. So I was really specific that we wanted a diverse group, and I think that's what we got. We met on April 27th at the Central Tech Library. We met on April 27th at the Central Tech Library to begin a discussion, and we're starting with the name for the new school, the colors and the mascot. The reason we're starting with that is because that decision has to be made quickly in order to be able to buy sports uniforms and do other things. So we intend to have other conversations later, but that's just the place we had to start. It was really interesting, they want nothing to do with where they're coming from. There was some talk, let's take one color from each school. They don't want anything old, they want all new. They wanna think outside the box and create something totally brand-new for themselves, and they were really excited to do that. So that was encouraging for me. They started throwing around all kinds of ideas, and I left there with my head spinning because I thought we were just gonna talk and they wanted to decide. So we're gonna meet again tomorrow. And when we meet tomorrow, I'm gonna ask them to formally go through a process of kind of making a motion for what a name could be and then seconding and getting a majority to agree. Yes, Mr. Spiegel?
So who makes that decision? I personally don't want my son, he would name something silly, he'd have purple in it.
Purple, yeah, purple's been discussed.
I just think that I don't trust my own family.
I don't trust my son either.
Right, right. So as long as we don't say, okay, the whatever, you know, call it. So it's not, the vote doesn't decide, right? We decide that because I don't trust.
No, I mean, Mr. President?
Yes.
I have saw somewhere in like the newspaper or something where they had already threw a name out there for the school. I was confused about how did a name come about publicly, it was in the newspaper, I think already.
I don't think the newspaper printed any actual name. They were, the students are throwing out names. I mean, they have lots of ideas. So we're listening to those names. But to your question, Mr. Spiegel and Ms. McNair, our idea, and we certainly want to hear from all of you on how you'd like this to go, our thought would be, let them pick, say, three that they can all agree on as options. Then let the administration also throw out a couple of options, put a ballot out to the student body with four or five different options, their ideas and perhaps yours, ours, whoever wants to pitch in on that, and then use that to inform the decision. But they feel strongly that they'd like the student body to vote, up to the final, of course, the final decision and stamp of approval from the board, but that is the way that they would like to see it go. But obviously, we're open to your suggestions on that. But again, thinking they would throw up, say, three, and we would put on two, and then let the student body vote on that.
As long as they don't make the final decision.
I agree.
I'm telling you, it's not, it's gonna be something, it's gonna be something current, you know, something awful, about like.
The other thing I wanted to add is, before they go on the ballot, we were going to ask all of you just to make sure you didn't have any objections, like, do we have any trademark issues? Is that something we're looking at? One of the names that was being thrown around is something we cannot use because it's already in use somewhere else. So we need to have legal look at it, we need to have all of you kind of take a look at it, but the students are gonna weigh in a lot on what they think their options should be. So we're meeting again tomorrow, as I said. Hopefully, after legal and everybody vets it, we'd like to have a student vote sometime in the middle of the month. Again, we don't want to rush this, but we have to order uniforms before too long here, so that's something that's really driving the decision. The students would like to do like a big press conference at Bet Stadium, that was an idea that came up, so we agreed to work with them on that to kind of reveal. I also told the kids to stay off social media. If you don't want everybody to know what you're talking about, then stay off social media and let's do it so we can kind of have a big surprise at the end. And then after that's decided, we want to continue to meet with them on all the, I hate to say important things, but the safety concerns, the culture-building concerns, so we would continue to meet with that group. So that's one part of what I'm working on. The other part is working to communicate what's happening to families. We know a lot of families are very concerned and have a lot of questions. So as Mr. Palito said, we're working with Child Accounting to have all projections set for where students would be next year. And we met this morning to talk about how a letter will go home during the week of May 15th or 16th. That letter would be individualized, so Mr. Spiegel, you get a letter saying, Dear Mr. Spiegel, your son will be at this school next year. We'd like to include some transportation information on there if we can. And we're also gonna be announcing some open house dates, so family can say, oh, my kid's going to Strong Vincent Middle School, it's open on this date, let's go down and take a look, because we think that will help allay some concerns. And then the boundary map, as Ms. Sversky said, has been online, has been promoted. We had to do that because of kindergarten registration. Families were coming here and finding out, we didn't want other families to say, well, why do they know and we don't? So that's why we put that map up live on the website. And then also, after, again, the name and mascot and things, just some culture-building events, as Mr. Brockman had indicated, Surveyori Weekend will be a great opportunity for the kids to work together. A game for peace is being worked on for alumni at East and Vincent to come together and play basketball. That date is tentatively set for June 17th. And then, you know, Ms. McNair, I was thinking about you and the 5K and that idea that you had had a couple of years ago, this might be a cool year to do that. So maybe we can talk, or that might be an opportunity for another kind of culture-building event. Any questions for me?
I do have a question. I saw in there about the community schools, and that was one issue when I went to a debate that they had at Martin Luther King Center, is that there were some concerns that we just hired all the community school directors, and how is that going to be reconfigured along with this project?
Yeah, thank you, that's a great question. We have been working, none of the community school directors will be let go. They've all been assured that the community school will simply move to a new school. Now, which new school is up for a little discussion? We need to work with the principals to make sure that the new administrators of those buildings are open to the model. We need to work with the partners to make sure that everyone feels good about it and the families. Right now, we're just in the last stages of that, and we hope to announce it publicly, I would say, within the next week, but no one will lose their jobs. Things will just be transported from Emerson, Gridley and Wayne to the new locations. And we're trying to make it so it's where most of those students are going as well, so the community school would follow them to their new school.
Was there, is there anybody else that's gonna be presenting about, are you gonna continue to talk, because I've got some questions, but I don't want to ask them before you guys are done.
We do have a few more from the other committees, and you might find that they're answering some of the questions you might have. So if that's okay, we'll continue, and then you feel free to interrupt at any point. The next one has to do with the programming. So Nora, do you want to speak to this?
The programming committee began, met for the first time on March 4th, and so we have content leads, which are administrators who have put their hat in the ring, they wanted to be involved in this process of programming. And then there are a number of teachers who the union either recommended, or principals, or somebody who we just needed for a particular content in order to have enough people to represent that. And then we also have counselors and special ed and technology as a separate content piece. So we have then, building upon a one-page document that I think everybody here probably saw, that was the Erie clusters, and there were color-coded, five different things, starting with arts and communication, and these were, this was our programming draft that we started with. It's a state document, so it's something that we just pulled off of PDE, really, so that was the best guidance that we could find. And so I'll talk you through a little bit of our changes first and then make sure that we hit all of the bullets that are up here. There was no way to fit this because it's grown so much with the work that these people have done and that they're so excited about, so I made a copy. And I'm pretty sure I have enough for, can you pass to the right? Pass to your other right?
It's for future later, Bobby.
Hi. Thank you. Just over here. So if we just focus on the first page for a moment, I can give you sort of the legend for how to read the rest of the document. So at the top, on the left side, we see the magnets that we will be implementing in 1718. Three of the five we can implement, at least in part. So that's arts and communication, this career in techa, and the human services magnet. On the right side are the academies that we will be implementing. And that, mostly Neil, would tell you about that. So then, we have the magnet at Collegiate Academy, which is arts and communication. It's in red because all of those pieces are fully blown and ready to go. Underneath that are the CTE programs that dovetail with that, that are existence right, that are in existence now, that's why they're red. Then the mathematics group folded in their ideas. In bold are core, I mean, mandatory offerings, and then electives that go with that magnet. And these are all courses we have right now, course codes currently available. You'll see the same thing under English, you have your core English courses that are graduation requirements, those are bold. In red are electives that match this pathway that we have already, and in black are other ideas that they had for things that they would like to be able to offer. And you can kind of follow the trend down through science and social studies. Any questions just about the general formatting of that? Okay, so then as we move on, there's the business, finance and informational technology, they call it BFIT. We are not able to implement that fully next year, so it's not color-coded, but all of the pieces that we do have are listed underneath there and they are color-coded. So while this takes several years to build to a full five pathways, we are identifying the pieces that we have already. On the third page, in blue, the magnet at Central Tech. So those are the trades and labs that fit under that, and then all of the pieces that we have available. And I actually, I stopped adding the social studies because at this, at this point, we're gonna leave this document, it's gonna become a scheduling document, and it's gonna become a true demonstration of each pathway because it's just getting too big. But the social studies pathway and electives would also be populated there. Human services is sort of that burnt orange color, and we will have two of those options And then on the last page is science and health, for which we have many of the content offerings available, but yeah, it's one of those building pieces. So the next step for this, one of the next steps will be for administrators to take the scheduling document and take the pathway documents that this group is creating, determine what electives they can offer in their buildings because they have the highly qualified people and they have the materials to do so, and then they will build their own schedules for next year. So this will be a very key part in that scheduling.
Do you have all the curriculum you need to start, or will we have to purchase, revamp, create, anything new comes September?
Everything that's color-coded, we have the potential for, so we have a course code and we have the teachers for. Some of these electives, like at Central Tech, obviously, they haven't had a lot of room in their schedule to offer electives, so they aren't gonna necessarily have a fiction workshop book. So that might be an expense, but it's not an elective they have to offer.
But that don't give us time to go into it. Everybody's set from September, and then the lesson time, the administrators have to figure out what we need to do.
Well, we'll hit the ground running with a lot of these pieces. The only difference is going to be if, I mean, any English teacher can teach any of these English language arts electives, but some of them are gonna require a resource, and that's when an administrator's gonna have to make a decision. Can I get this resource? Is this something that can be open source? My teachers could find this online? So that's gonna be part of the selection process for this. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I have a question, I have a question. Okay, so I'm looking through this, and this is mostly, these are things that we already have, correct?
That's right. That's what's in color. It matches up with the color of that magnet, that estate document.
So basically, right now, the magnet is being built on stuff that we already have.
That's right.
Not so much stuff that we are saying that we, you know, when we were first talking about having a magnet, we were talking about all the potential of what we can have above and beyond what we already have, because like most of these, a lot of these things we had when I was in high school at Central. So I'm just wondering, my question is, this is stuff that we already have, you're building a magnet around the stuff that we already have, but my expectation was building around the magnet around the fact that you're gonna bring a lot of more students in, a lot of these classrooms, a lot of these classes might already be full in that the selection was gonna be greater than what we already have now. So what I would want is like a timeline on when the expansion of the ones that are not highlighted are going to occur, because this is stuff we already have. How are more students gonna be added into some of these programs? Like, I mean, at Central Tech, I mean, I was in, some of the programmings and the classes were full back then when I was there, so if we're adding more students, how is that selection process gonna happen when, you know, it's still just the existing ones that we already have? Or how is that gonna, how is everybody gonna fit in there? Because my understanding of that was gonna be a broader selection base, but be, above and beyond what we already have right now.
We, while we have these course codes, they've never been articulated or aligned in a way to meet a pathway, which will actually, over a three-year span of planning, will allow us to develop a pathway for an articulation with a college or with a local business, you know, those types of things are what we will be building over the next three years. And so while these course codes have been available since you were in high school, we haven't been able to teach the courses because we didn't have the right configurations. I mean, now is an opportunity for us to do something that we could not do in recent years. So we're taking those old course guides and looking at things that were great courses that we have not had the staffing or the critical mass of students to provide, and now we're able to do it. Does that, what did I miss in your question?
That answered part of it, but like, just to piggyback off of what Tom was saying, as far as like, you know, he had questions about like, you're saying that you're gonna implement stuff that we had that might not have necessarily been up and running or functioning appropriately. But if you don't have, how are you gonna get the resources for those if we weren't, if we weren't doing it already? How is that gonna occur? I know there's probably gonna be more teachers in the buildings because of the consolidation, so you'll have the staffing, but I'm talking about the resources to actually implement to ensure that these ones that you're saying that's gonna happen when we open in August, they are fully up and running and not just saying, okay, this is what we had the potential of having in August. I would like to know, like, are these gonna be options on these student schedules and are we gonna be able to at least implement these? And like you said, you're giving like a three-year timeline for the rest of them to start functioning that are in black, or is this a three-year timeline to get the ones that are already highlighted functioning?
So I guess you're one step ahead of me, because what we have here is the preliminary of potential, that a building administrator is going to create a course, a scheduling card from. Because every student has to have a schedule when they start school on August 29th. They're going to make decisions based on the resources they have in their building or the resources that they have potential for. A lot of these pieces are open resourced. I mean, they can, you can find an entire media studies course online. Or we might not have it in any, we offer at a collegiate right now, so let's use their curriculum and materials. I mean, they're, these all have potential, but the next decision-making step has to be made.
Okay, so when is that gonna happen? Because that's one of my concerns, is that when, when we start doing, like you said, the pathway with these children's schedules for August, I would like to know before we get to voting or anything, is, okay, you're telling me that this stuff might be available, we can pull resources offline, I wanna know what actually is gonna be available when school starts to August, before I vote on something.
So next Thursday, I'm meeting with these administrators until this is decided.
Okay.
However, long. However long that takes. And Friday, it will be decided because we need to schedule our students.
Right.
They need, you know, I mean, that's, that begins another logistical process. So next week.
And if we, the one thing that we've talked about before is like the early childhood magnet that we've talked about with family and consumer science. We have received all of the necessary curriculum for it and the resources for it. So that one will be up and running, as well as, this is right here for the high school, but we also have for middle school. So I can tell you right now that we will have the family and consumer science. We will have the computers, the technology, business course.
And that's my question. I want to know what, I don't want to know what you're going to have the potential of having because you can have the potential of having anything. I want to know exactly what you are, like how you're telling me, you have the resources and it's solid that you're going to be able to offer that CDA for those students next year when they start school. They can hop right into the CDA program. That's what the board, at least some of the members that I've talked to, want to know, is when they walk in that building in August, what is there, what can they put on their schedules? Like when my daughter went to Collegiate and we filled out schedule cards, they had definite courses available on those schedule cards that she could sign up for. And when she goes to school in August, she'll actually be in that class. Not like the potential of what.
And I think that, that like Nora said, this is where we're at right now with all of the pieces. And when we met yesterday with our programming committee, they, they shared out all of the potential and all of the pieces that they feel that they could do. Now it'll be the administrators working with Nora to get that streamlined and ready for next week. So that, as you said, when we do an open house, we want them to be able to get their schedules, know what they're going to do, and be ready for next year.
Right.
Absolutely.
And we are planning to have scheduling done before the end of the school year so the kids will be able to pick their courses before they leave this year. So they'll know what they're going to take next year. One other good thing that, out of the program, programming committee, and it was really exciting to see all the positive talk and seeing those groups come together and a lot of groups that weren't together often because they're in different curricular areas, talking about the different things that they can offer. And I know we have some groups to jump through on the career and tech side, but one of the things that the career and tech people were talking about is all the fun toys they have over on that side of the building, that now maybe there's some opportunity for students that are in the magnet program to come over and try those things out without going into full-blown career and tech program. On the other side, we're moving to block schedule at, at Central Tech. So that will allow all the tech students to take many more electives starting next year. So they're going to have a lot more opportunities next year, right out of the chute, just because of that change.
Right, and that, see, that's another thing that, that gets to know about the block scheduling and things like that. Those are particulars that I'm interested in because those are more of the academic things. And that's what I'm looking at. Of course, we're looking at savings, but I'm concerned with what's going to happen program-wise and academics-wise. I don't, you can throw dollars at me all day long, but I need to know what's going to happen with the kids. That's my concern.
This is the real reason why we're doing this. Because we're going to have better opportunities for our kids next year. And they're going to continually grow as we move and develop all those programs.
And we even talked about, after that meeting yesterday, it is uplifting because we've had so many downers. When everyone left, we thought, well, maybe we could do an open house and then have all the various programs tell what the potential will be. And then say, this is what we can offer this year, and then that's how it will evolve.
And then as the year, as the, my question is, as the, she mentioned like a three-year timeline to start adding some of this programming, additional programming or to make some of the programming solid, just so over time, just like a little timeline of what programs do you think the ones that have potential would maybe be available for the next school year? I just want kind of like a timeline because I know all this stuff is not going to happen. And I know some parents and community members feel like, you know, all this stuff's going to happen this year. But I think that, you know, no matter what, this was going to happen. We were going to consolidate, period. You know what I'm saying? But when it happened, it's so quickly, just making sure everybody's informed so they, they are not taken by surprise, you know, when they walk into whatever it is. And I do feel like the open house is a good idea so that they do know what options are going to be available for next school year. And you know, and I would like a timeline for what's going to be available for the next three school years as well.
And the weekly meetings that we were scheduling, that will give the notes to you, anything that happens over that week, which it will move quickly, anything in any of these, these committees will be sent to all of you so you'll know what's new that's come out from that week. Mr. Polito and I meet with the administrative teams every Wednesday that we're continuing to talk about what are the necessities they need. And that will continue all the way until they feel comfortable, as well as all of these committees will be working. And this programming committee, we feel that this committee will be working for at least a year or two to really continue to flush out what's best for the students.
Any other questions?
Neil?
Yeah, Ken.
This is still with the programming committee? It's one of the academies that if you see on this, we have a ninth grade academy, a newcomer academy, a recovery academy, and then again, the college prep. So Neil?
So in doing all of the work that I do with the non-traditional pathway students and knowing how certain students do not have enough credits to advance or to graduate on time, we definitely know that there's a need there. Right now, if you just look at Easton Vincent, there's a little bit more than 200 students who would be seniors and would be juniors next year that are not on track for graduating. So we thought of a way that we could possibly, number one, get them on track for graduation. Or number two, get them to the point where they can go back to the traditional way of learning. So this idea of a recovery academy really came up. So we're looking for about 180 kids next year that would be juniors and would be seniors. And it would be a hybrid between online learning and face-to-face instruction. Through the work that I've done with Cyber School, I can tell you that the students are doing very well as far as completing classes and earning credits. But the ones who have gone to Central and have worked with the teachers one-on-one have completely outshined everybody else. So the idea would be that we would bring these students in and teach them in a different manner, very small groups, grouping them by ability level so that we can get them to have the foundational skills that they need so that they can then go on and complete additional classes through the cyber offerings that we have. Part of that includes literally creating a student portfolio of those students. So where do they fall academically? Their grit, how much grit do they have? What is their motivation? And, and the idea is that we want to have them create their long and short-term goals. So maybe the short-term goal is to rejoin their peers. Maybe their short-term goal is just to graduate. Maybe their long-term goal is to become a nurse. So without knowing who they are and without creating a plan for how they get there, it's, we're not going to change anything. And so that, in a nutshell, is the recovery program.
Will they be required to go there or are they voluntary?
It's going to be voluntary. I think that with the way that we're going to develop this, because we know who they are, we should be able to entice them enough. I mean, if you are supposed to be a junior next year and you have two credits, I think just, number one, the opportunity to be able to rejoin your peers and graduate with the rest of the people that you entered high school with three years ago on time, that should be a pretty big incentive.
I really don't think you should give them the choice on that. If failure is in front of them, then guide them because I don't think they have the ability to see that. You know, they think you're going along your merry way with two credits.
Well, I'll defer to.
I saw that for years.
I'll defer to legal for that decision.
We have to entice them, is that what we have to do? What happened to teaching?
We'll have the opportunity to show them the benefits of that decision.
That wasn't my question. Typical legal.
So the other question that was brought up is regarding staffing. And so Teresa is going to share out where she's at with her staffing.
So two of the concerns that came out from the listening tour, teaching positions, how those will be affected, and will class sizes swell? So if you could advance the next one. So quite honestly, this is an anxious time for all of our employees, not just teachers. As far as where am I going to be located next year? How's the process going to happen? So we've been, we've tried to be very deliberate about the steps that we're, we're going to take with this. The first thing that we did is, we came up with the administrator assignments, which are all ready for approval. And I've been working with supervisors, principals, and new leadership separately. So working with the EEA, working with 1968, with 95, to talk about how we're going to proceed moving forward. One of the things that we had, that kind of held us up is we needed to figure out how we needed to staff our building. So looking at the EEA, for example, what programs were we going to offer? How are we going to staff them? We finished that up today, so we are all set. And I've been working with the EEA to post those positions. Those should be up at some point Friday. Those positions will be posted until the 18th. So then we'll start the process of awarding those positions to teachers. So as those postings are up and EEA is bidding, I will work with 95 and 1968, Mr. Polito and Ms. Hbersky to decide what kind of staffing we need as far as teacher assistants, custodians, engineers, so we can start to move with that process. A lot of this stuff is happening naturally. For example, with the secretaries union, there's some bidding going on now. And we'll also have to take retirements into consideration as to how we move forward with staffing. Looking at, back to the teacher side of it, we staffed and based our numbers on 25 students a class at the elementary level and 30 at the max, 30 students a class at high school. So those would be the maximum numbers for those classes. So that's where we are right now. As we continue to move through this process, I'll have more information with the other, with the other employees.
Yes.
I've given that a girl on those administrative positions. I reviewed those, you did a great job in getting, especially up at Central. We've got them all together there. So we're going to have identification of all students a couple of times.
And it's definitely a team effort.
And that night?
Thank you.
I saw on a flyer, I saw on a slide, I don't know if it was one of Daria's slides, about diversity in the staffing. How are you addressing that?
Well, we have to work through the natural process of the seniority. So we're talking about teaching.
Just the staff that's going to be in the building in general.
Okay, so.
I mean, I know that, you know, we've all had this discussion, Dee knows, we had this discussion about diversity in our staffing. And I know there is a struggle as far as with teachers, but just in general, making sure that the staff in the building is diverse since the culture of the school will be very diverse.
Correct.
And I saw a slide up there that said something about diversity in staffing. So I'm just, I was wondering, and that was going to be a question of mine anyways, how are you addressing to ensure that there is a diverse representation in the building, seeing as though the students will be coming from very diverse backgrounds?
So, Greg. We, as far as the teaching staff, that's all part of the bidding process. But we will, and we did send you out the administrator, both administrator assignments, and we will be talking about that as part of those assignments and bidding up the responsibilities later on in the next session.
Okay. I'll be there, Brian.
Anything else?
I have a question. Based on this, how many of our young teachers are we going to lose?
I don't know the answer to that yet. It would, it's going to depend on retirements. And right now, we're looking at, there are probably about, I'd probably say right around 100 teachers who are on that subcontract that would normally get released. So it all depends on how things shake up at the top. Unfortunately, the possibility of losing some really good young teachers is out there.
Mr. Polito, transportation?
So we had a meeting with the MTA yesterday, and we're still trying to finalize what, what we can and can't do next year. We did review with them the, what we feel is probably the number of students that need to be transported at, at each building. I, I don't have anything finalized at this point, but I'm still very hopeful that we'll be able to increase our transportation next year and offer it to all our high school students. So right now, the most likely proposal will, will be a increase of the transportation to all high school students within a two-mile, outside a two-mile radius would be transported. And then elementary and middle school students outside a mile and a half radius would be transported. And at this point, it's looking like we will be able to do all that and save an additional $300,000 next year. So we, the MTA needs to check on a few things and get some approvals at the state level in order to make this work. They understand our timeline and know that we need to get this done as soon as possible. And we're still hoping that we can have all that information in the May 15th mailing.
Yes.
How about the kid who lives across the street? We're not going to get a situation where on this side of the street, he's going to get bused and on this side of the street, he's not. Are we conscious of that situation?
You always have to align it.
It's got to be aligned. I don't know. How much would it cost us to, especially on the elementary level, to wipe that kind of mile and a half thing out?
Well, we, it, once we get into the mile, I looked at a mile and a quarter and a mile and a half. Again, I can't give you the final numbers until we get some more details from the MTA. But the mile and a quarter and mile and a half, if we want to do that, is we aren't going to be able to save any money by, by doing that. And that may be something that the board would want to consider. But again, we've been kind of counting on some type of savings in transportation.
I'd like to figure if we at least bust all elementary, all elementary kids that need it to be busted. I mean, if they live across from you from the school, that's different. But I hate to see that situation. It happened before when kids had to cross 26th Street and walk to get to Grove in Cleveland, as an example. I think we have to be very aware of that, especially at the elementary level.
So once we have the final numbers, and hopefully next week I can have that for you, we can bring you a number of different scenarios to consider as part of the budget process.
Chris President?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Polito. Are we revising our stand on how we bus charter schools and their students?
Yes, our plan right now is, I don't know how it happened over the years, but we transport all charter students regardless of where they, where they live.
They live next door to the charter.
So we do have a lot of parents that choose a charter school just because of that transportation issue. That, that is problematic at best. So we're going to bring everything in line with whatever we do with our regular education kids. So if we transport a mile and a half, we're going to do the same thing with the charters. And again, that's all part of our discussion with the MTA. We're hopeful that they are going to be able to take on that transportation and we'll be able to move it away from yellow bus service and into the MTA. So we have consistent transportation for all students we're responsible for across the district.
Will we be able to reduce the charters to state minimum? And is that what we want to do with our own kids? Is it disincentive to go to the charters?
We have to be consistent.
We do have to be consistent, and we have had long conversations regarding what the state minimums are.
So we are going to minimize, as far as charter schools, I think, right?
Well, the charter school, the high school students have to have, see, that was about a month ago. The charter school students have to have transportation for up to two miles from the high school. And the elementary students are within a mile and a half. Where we don't have to offer transportation for our students. We have to offer that minimum level of transportation for the charter schools.
Why?
State law. It's in the charter school law.
Can somebody bring that up next week at that notification hearing?
Mr. Polito?
Why would they differentiate between a public school student and a charter school student?
I, I don't have an answer. I don't know.
Mr. Polito, do you want to speak to the staggered start, the possibility of a staggered start?
Right, so part of making this all work is if we're going to add an additional 3,000 or 2,000 students to the MTA's roles to have staggered start so that they can use, they can better utilize their buses and drivers. Right now, we transport all our schools start at the same time, which Right now, we transport all our schools start at the same time, which is very different than what happens in the county. Right now, all the county schools have two runs, so they have their high school and middle schools typically start at earlier than their elementary schools, and the whole reason for that is to better utilize transportation, so that the bus drivers can go out on one run and pick up the high school and middle school kids, drop them off at school, and then go back out and transport the elementary students. And again, you're better utilizing the resources that you have by doing that. So, that's a part of the discussion we're having with the MTA. We're getting them all the start times. One of the big issues is the charter and parochial schools. We can't force them to change their start's time, so we're going to have to figure our staggered start proposal around what they are willing to do next year.
Isn't it true that, you know, when you have a route where you're picking up middle school students, high school students, and elementary school students, that there's probably going to be less chaos if your bus is picking up elementary school students that need to be picked up, and then middle school, and then high school, that the safety of the children is far greater by doing it like that?
That's something we could consider. The only, the only problem with doing three starts is we need about an hour in between each morning start, so it would have to look something like seven, eight, or nine, and nine, or seven-thirty, eight-thirty, and nine-thirty, which really, on that last group, would push back the school day by considerable amount.
So, would we be doing high school and junior high school on the same bus, and then, let's say, like where I live up, there's a kids' turn south, and work north, drop the kids off at the high school, and then continue that north, and from this, presumably, is that how that would something to go, or?
Those are all details the MTA is going to have to work out. Right now, I believe they do triple runs for each of our schools, so there shouldn't be too much crossover right now if we kinda stagger that.
So, just to reiterate that the reorganization committee does meet every Tuesday, and to expect the notes that come from that committee that will help keep you up to date on everything from all of the different committees that we presented today. And if the public would like to view those meeting notes, that if you go to the website, you would be able to also, we're going to post them, so everyone can see them as well. And that's it. For the presentation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, last meeting, I did ask, and I am holding my request up and standing firm on it, and I'm requesting that, that we have a public meeting before we vote of some sort, whether it's a community meeting, like we held at some of the centers, or if it's a meeting out of school, where we present the latest information on what's gonna happen for the start of the school year to us and to the general public, so they have an understanding. More, because the listening tours were more getting information from them to see what they thought, but there's nothing besides wanting a website or watching on TV, that's one thing, but I would like a live presentation to the community on all of the updated information that you have before we vote in June. That's a request, a formal request that I'm making.
I think we can do that.
Thank you. So as soon as someone has a date, you can forward that to me and some more information on that.
And I don't, we have the formal vote on the 22nd right now. When is our, maybe the whole meeting in June? When is it, the 7th or the 14th? The formal, the final vote? Is it the 1st?
June 14th.
June 14th. We could shoot, and maybe we would wanna schedule it maybe all over east, and then we could present all that information, and that would be about a week before the vote.
The vote. And I want it to be well-publicized, well, I want it out there, so that people in the community know that here's an opportunity to see and come, hear, listen, and, you know, ask questions, whatever it needs to be done, so that they know what's happening before we vote, and so that we have a clear understanding of what's gonna happen once the doors open before we vote.
Mr. Polito, do you wanna speak on the sale of the vacant property?
Yes, a couple months back, you gave us the administration authorization to sell the properties that we are no longer utilizing, and one of the recommendations that PFM gave us was to use the, our local redevelopment authority to help market and evaluate proposals. So we are scheduling a tentative meeting with them. We have it scheduled.
We have it scheduled.
Okay, we have a meeting scheduled.
Next week.
Next week, to talk about these and how they can help us out, and we would recommend that we just, because we're not real estate experts here, and they would be able to do it for us at no charge, to turn that responsibility over to them, so that they can take a look and help us market it again, evaluate any proposals that come in, and give us a recommendation on whether or not it's something that the board would want.
Any questions on that? Ms. Hbersky, math curriculum?
Yes, I would ask Ms. Nora to come forward. She is going to share with you some of our resources that we're looking at for our math curriculum, and maybe you can explain where we're at, and this is for middle school, middle school math.
This, the story of this actually begins with Nancy Sodali, who had a great friend at McGraw-Hill, whose name is Vicki McDonough. Vicki came to me last summer, hearing of our challenges here, and said, tell me what I can do for you. And she's a math specialist from McGraw-Hill. So I said, can you help us with middle school math? And so she was here on August 24th. She actually worked with, a half a day with our middle school teachers, a half a day with our high school teachers, and she shared the master codes for all of their resources, so that these teachers could supplement their curriculum with these materials, and that was all free of charge. So over the course of the year, I've had teachers stop me, oh my gosh, this is so nice, I love the assessment package, I love this, and tell me how wonderful this was, and what a great resource it was. So then, in about November, we were granted a mobile math and science grant, an educational access grant, and I started to talk to Vicki a little bit more about what could she do for us if we were to, you know, take the positive feedback from these teachers and try to make it into a year-long adoption. And she did better than that. She actually, I will show you the cost out of this. So, I collected feedback from the teachers, the EEA collected feedback, they worked very collaboratively on this process, because we have a tight timeline to spend this money. On June 30th, it's gone. If it's not spent, it goes away. So I have just a one-page piece that shows what we're spending now to print our curriculum versus what we will spend to purchase, and then what you're actually getting with each of those.
See this for the rest of the media?
Well, now you know. So this is a very brief overview, but I know you're tired of listening to me tonight, but the district printing, pros and cons are on the left. This is what we have right now, in grades six, seven, and eight for mathematics. We print what is called Kentucky Notebooks, and they're student consumables, so the students can write right in them, which is nice, and then the teachers can rip out pages to take home a grade. I mean, there are some conveniences, it's the best we could do with our own brain power and labor. And then what we will have, for the next two years, she actually priced out, it's almost buy one year, get one free. She comped us so much of this material. So we get the Glencoe course, 1, 2, 3, 1 is 6, 2 is 7, 3 is 8. All the student bundles, an actual book of consumables, all teacher additions, and then the e-teacher package again, so the master codes that teachers got to use last year. There is a supplement that's called Alex, which allows for a brief assessment, an adaptive brief assessment, where the next item on the assessment is triggered by the student's last response, so it gives them a really clean snapshot of where the student is mathematically, and then it triggers lessons based on that. And students can do that on their phone if they want, they can, it can be accessed from anywhere. And then professional development four times a year. So you can see the total for two years, the grant will cover one entire year, so the savings to do the new program is over $90,000. And, like I said, I was fortunate to have the EEA support this, because, I mean, this typically follows a different path, where teachers are involved in materials selections, and teachers were involved, it just didn't follow the same process, so. Any questions about McGraw-Hill?
You said buy one, get one free?
That's, that's the pricing that she gave me. That would be nice. The grant will actually pay for the first year, so.
Nice job.
Thank you. I'm excited about this.
That's great.
Thank you. Anything on new business or career and tech business? Any other matter, anybody? If not, we will go into executive session. We'll take about a 10-minute recess, and go into executive session.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that most of our time tonight was spent on curriculum and programming.
Disgusting change.
Jay's not here.
Let's go into recess.